Guys that farms their rotations, their feedlot down there. And there's a lot in the, you know, because I had a conversation with them one time. I said, well, you guys are running some pretty heavy trucks. And he goes, yeah, but we're running on the highway. They have scales on their trucks. They're not running over loaded. And he's wondering if that's the same, you know, with any of these other guys. And then he didn't point fingers or nothing. He was very cordial, but he just, he felt like they would probably be. I think CD was very easy to deal with, and I think they would work on something. But I don't think they're just going to come out and go, yeah, we're wrecking the road. We're going to fix it. I think if, if there was some kind of a scenario, I don't know what that is. But I think their expectation is the same that the folks in the Cantail area is, is that we should be taking care of that road. Because I had, I had asked him about if they were even interested in cost sharing paving it. Because I just felt like maybe long-term, that was maybe the best idea. I mean, it's going to be expensive. And it was just, it's a conversation that maybe needed to be had because that road obviously was built originally to pave it. It's wide. It's, it's meant to have shoulder and, I mean, it's a wide road. And that's probably the problem with maintaining is it's too darn wide.
Too flat, too wide.
But even that conversation was, they didn't feel like that was the overall solution too. Just because, you know, asphalt's got its own issues too. And the cost would be pretty huge. And where do you stop now? This, this CD you have to cost your all the way into the boat ramp? No, that's not fair. And so the conversation wasn't ignored, but a lot of, you know, nakers got brought up too, which they were wrong. So I, I don't think they are, I don't, I don't think there's any idea that we have off the table. But they're pretty smart cookies. They're not just going to go, oh, sure, we'll throw money at something. They're going to ask questions and they're going to want something. You know, so unless you have a diehard plan, I don't think they're just going to go volunteer and, you know, pay for the road or something, you know.
Right with that.
I think for now, um, we definitely probably need to get some kind of focus on that, on that area right now.
I could call like this Brian Rudy. Give like Brian Rudy a call.
Uh, I don't think anybody's got his number. That's the thing. He's got, I'm another guy from Camera Colony, but that's where, you know, somebody.
These guys that want to work, like they are more than welcome to contact me. Trying to find their numbers and stuff like that. The office number is on their website, I believe.
Yeah.
I'll get a hold of these two, three guys.
It's easier for them to contact me than me to try to find them and contact them.
Well, I had the same situation where, like I said, you know, Brian's name got brought up. And then I was, I was told I was going to get contacted once he figured out his schedule and I never got. So I, my assumption was either deciding you didn't want to do it or the schedule wouldn't work because I didn't hear from him, so.
Jim Wigmer had called me, then I had called him and gave, gave you that nine number.
So there's just that one contact to make. Anyway, if, if you find a plan that works for you, I don't think anybody here's got a problem. Like if you bring in somebody on, even if it's like the weekend worker. At this point, we just need to make sure that road stays in decent shape because it's only going to get worse on its harder starts. So, so anyways, other than that.
I'll get him to just go along. All three.
Okay. Well, other than that, I think all we got left is building permits and bills unless you've got something else to add.
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay.
Do you, like, I guess the biggest bill you'll see in there is from RTS sharing, so.
Well, I think everybody's expecting that one, so.
And there's, uh, we're going to just finish over. I got a little bit more just to go through their whole sheets and make sure it's all matched up. But everything seems to be looking good somewhere.
How about gravel prospects? You find anything else down south?
No, yeah, like we haven't even been able to look. There is, RTS is going to be talking to a coroner that they possibly sell us. So that depends on what. We have no budget for gravel, so.
Oh, where's that one, this Spalker deal?
No, that.
No, that would be a red corner.
He thought maybe this home, may, maybe.
And then we're just going to try to get down to the other fifth and, and prospect. We got a few spots to prospect.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Alan. Well, just bills and building permits, I think let's just go through lunch and be done, okay?
Yeah, let's go again.
So do those utility permits first?
Yeah, well, the utility permits too, yeah. So there's a utility permit for South Central Regional Water installed rural water line crossing the southeast corridor section six. Township 134, range 78. Scavenger said everything looked good, but it's just a little bit. That would be more than, um, straight.
Oh, with dog.
He doesn't do the. Yeah, it's out there, just, it's almost long, it's even a border.
They must have had a water break the other night that on a highway that was tipped on the far side and into the western seams and not regulated. Because that big river is probably about 11:30 with an excavator and three pickup truck there.
Probably, I don't know nothing about.
You don't know anything about it? Okay.
So yeah, so we got the utility permits. They're both just, uh, and they're like right next to each other, so.
I'll make a motion about it.
Motion by Commissioner Everly, second by Commissioner Materia, to approve the utility permits for South Central Regional Water. 40184 other line. Southeast corridor section one township 134, range 79. Got motion second, any more discussion on the utility permits? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Utility permits approved.
Running water, yes. A lot of water.
Go ahead.
Yeah, in search, yeah. I think motion would be there.
Mid sites are all good. They're all good, they're all fine, right? They're the back way, they're the back track, regular track. You know, on place to go to say anything. Commissioner Materia.
Yeah, I'm happy.
Commissioner Materia makes a motion to approve building permit for the town road to the rack two, 56,000, which will. Range ends on section five township 133, gate 76. And the other, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Everly, any discussion building permit for Ryan? Well. Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Permit approved. Next is building permit for Tim Bergad to erect a 30 by 36 storage building on lot 53 in tract A, section 27. Township 132, range 79.
Sounds so good. Sounds so good.
Stand by Beaver Bay, you said?
Yeah, the other one.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Materia to approve building permit for Tim Bergad, is our second step. Second by Commissioner Hall, any more discussion? Building permit for Tim Bergad. Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Permit approved. Next is a building permit for Chris and Andrew Backus.
Well, choose a renewal.
That's a renewal for the building permit. So they got a building permit, it probably went over the one year, they didn't build, and now they're just renewing. So it's probably previously already approved, but. Building permit for Chris and Andrew Backus to erect a 38 by 56 residence with an attached.
Long.
Perhaps, uh, 136. I think the building out there is just right by, um. Yeah, that's, uh, like, who smarter, you're right.
Yeah, you can see a lot there, stake in the other.
Yeah, I'm assuming that got approved once before, they just said, yep. June 22, it was. Motion second to approve the renewal for Chris and Andrew Backus. Any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Renewal approved. Okay, next is a liquor license for Puncher Bar for one day event on August 13, point 23 at the Strugger Roading Grounds. You guys know what's.
I'll make a motion for that.
Uh, so yeah, either Bull Ram or Grand Road, you know, both. Right, did Gary? Well, I texted Gary too to look at it, so maybe we should, let's just.
I always send them a copy of the agendas.
Right.
Do a little Gary. Just text him. Yeah, because she said she wants to post it, he can manage it.
Okay, so the next is a, next tour liquor license looks wait for a second, go to your director. So renewal building permit for Joe or Janelle Flosser to erect 28 by 30 garage. On lot one. One, lots one, there's 18, block five, template and section five township 134, 76.
So I'll go with the same?
Uh, no, Joe Flosser, I'm guessing that's intended there. They probably have building permit for garage, you know, it's just a renewal school.
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the permit for Janelle Flosser, second by Commissioner Materia, discussion. Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Renewal approved. Well, I think we'll just wait on the liquor licenses for a second, probably work on the bills and then just before we get done here. Make sure, make sure they're probably fine, but. I know the last time we approved liquor license in here, you had.
Are we done with the budget thing?
Oh, yeah, preliminary budget. We never finalized that. Okay. For that, Gary. That's for that.
Yes, can do a theory.
Oh, that's like, uh. Yeah. Did you get it mailed or something? Oh. Uh, usually get half that stuff mailed. And then file for.
You need the veterans, that's the veteran. Why do you spell?
I think that they gave you any copy of that, so you have one. Yeah. I'm getting from Joe's office, yes. Thank you.
What about the mission deal? If you've got anything out there?
I don't think there's really anything to update. The petitions are due till August 11th, so until they all come in, I guess. I don't know if any of them are in as of now. I have to do for another 10 days, so.
Well, should we set up the date now or should what?
Yeah, because.
Instead of wait till it comes?
Yeah. It's a really good idea.
And what are you going to do with a special meeting? Going to have them go through all these paths and these petitions as the board? And have them come in, kind of just look at it, question this group?
Nope. I think one at a time, just like a job interview, just interrogate them essentially. I don't know, I guess my opinion was is, um, there's four of us. I don't think 20 questions is out of line. So each one of us comes up with five questions and submit them to Marcy. Because she doesn't feel like, I mean, there's no questions for the commission appointment. You know? Not a good idea? Just everybody come up with five questions. And I guess if there's some repeating, then we just ask less than 20 questions. What do you guys think? That way everybody's kind of got a fair shake at, not that somebody comes up with all the questions. What do you think, Marcy?
Okay, what?
Well, we were going to maybe pick a date to, for interviews since, I mean, we know the, do know when the petitions are going to be. And the other thing was, is my thought process was 20 questions is probably not out of line to ask. There's four of us, so if we all came up with five questions, submit them to you?
Sure. I did reach out to Pam.
Uh huh.
And asked her if she had any. And she reached out to, um, all the HRs and said, we're going to do them, did he need these questions?
Oh, so you do have some, with some questions.
She has, unless you have your own, you want to submit to me, we'll use them.
Older, you.
How many questions? Yeah, yeah, there you go, Donnie. What's your ethnicity or what's your religion? How old are you? Yeah, just ask all them good ones right away.
You want to do a scoring?
I think you're going to have to score it. I think that's the only probably way to, I mean, I don't know.
I know, I did. I don't like the scoring.
Oh, I don't disagree with you. I'm just trying to think, it's, it's going to be hard to differentiate.
I know.
We don't have to score this, I don't think. It's not really like a.
But that doesn't work out too bad most of the time though.
Sometimes you can be, yeah.
Well, I just, I mean, I, I thought about that too, because this isn't really like a job. There's no like veterans requirement, all the things that you do scoring for to make sure that you don't cheat someone.
I think.
Right, I'm saying, I don't think you have to score. I'm just saying that, that, um, I'm, I'm on the fence about it because I think scoring at least. Probably clarifies the decision, but at the same time, like you said, sometimes you do some scoring and at the end of it, you're like. Well, this guy scored one more point, but I really feel like this person was better. You know, it's, I mean, it's, because unless you're really mastering it, you remember what you scored. Sometimes you're just going by feel. The first person was really nervous, or you were nervous for the first person, but the fourth one, you're in a groove and now you're, you're, you're. Pickier about this or not picky about it. Sometimes the scoring is unfair because, like I said, by the time you start at nine and then you're done at two, you might be a little grouchy or maybe you're in better mood. Maybe you're hungry, maybe. So maybe you don't do scoring, I don't know.
So are you looking for a date to do it?
Yeah, well, the, the only thing, so August 11th is a Friday. Our next meeting looks like it would be the 15th right after Labor Day.
Me, I'm just going to throw two dates up. 15th or 16th would work best for me. I don't know if they were worth it.
That'd be the following Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yeah.
Of August, 15th to 16th?
August 15th and 16th, so that would be right away.
Would be right away. The next week I'm busy, I'm too busy.
Every day in August is awful for me, so I really, I, I, it's actually easy for me to pick because no matter what day I pick, it's going to suck. It's going to be busy no matter what, so whether what day I pick, I push itself aside, so it really doesn't matter. Uh, I don't have any immediate plans for the 15th or the 16th, so I'm open to either one.
I just thought that way, we do it right away. That way it gives the guy time where we do hire.
There's no self, self-country human service meetings. Well, that's usually on Mondays, right?
That'll be next Monday.
That's on Monday, I knew that was coming up too, so.
Oh, wait, it's the second Monday in the month. What's, what is?
That's the 14th.
Oh.
Well, how are you going to do this? If there's guys that are going to be, we speak to them at nine, and this would go till two. They could sit, well, it wouldn't be online, as you can watch because it's video the next day where you can watch it. So it wouldn't be fair to the guy that's, uh, spoken to at nine and he comes in at two, three in the locker, watch what's going on.
I think it's going to be public, anybody can come in. I think the interviewers we can't have because I, I, that part, I think you'd have to differentiate.
You have to.
You can't, yeah, you couldn't have three guys in here knowing the questions, whatever, that's pretty unfair.
That ain't fair.
I think, I think with that.
You have to be, yeah.
It has to.
I mean, I don't know if you can legally bar them, but I think it'd be pretty shady. Honestly, I'm just going to tell you, if I had somebody that wanted to sit in the corner when he wasn't being interviewed. He's already interviewed, it's one thing, before their interview. I think I'd almost rule that personnel. I would just go, you know what, you should really kind of just remove yourself. Right, I, I feel like, I feel like the other two, three, five of them should sit out in the hallway or just leave and come back at their time. And then once someone interviews at nine and then they want to sit in here the rest of the day, I don't really see no harm in that. But like you said, I don't think anybody should really be privy to the questions or.
No.
Or, you know, be able to prepare where the first and second people are going to get under fire.
I thought that too.
You know, it's got to be fair and respectful.
Like I said, it's, it's really got to be an open, public meeting, so I don't think you can bar anyone. But I would just say if anybody like wants to make it a point to sit in here before they're interviewed. I think I'd really have a problem with that and that'd probably affect my decision because I'd be like, ethically and just. For you should be like, no, I'll wait outside. And I think it'd be fair to all of them to just.
What's legality of it?
I, that I don't know because we're in a process here.
What's the what of it?
The legality, can you bar them out of it? I, you know, I suppose you would have some precedent because it is an interview, I would think that you would probably be.
With an open meeting, I think you've got to let a man.
Well, my point is, is I'm, I'm drawing it from the aspect of. They should, they should really. They should really, they should really respect the idea of like, yeah, okay, I'm going to stay out. I mean, it is trying to be an open, fair process. I don't think that would be very fair to just, like you said, let three or four of the people sit in here and get to prep their answers. While the first or second ones get peppered with this stuff, they're not ready.
I thought about that too, and what I'm going to do, let's say we would get four candidates. I'm going to take the candidates, put them in a hat, go down to the office where there's a witness. Pull the first one out, give the first one I call, give the second.
And I will gather, should be a rotation maybe of questions. So somebody is eavesdropping, whatever. It's a fair question being addressed to him and it's not that same prep question, you know? Maybe, that's just food for thought.
The only trouble I have with that is you're asking different questions to different people. That's kind of a, you know, the, the nice part about the consistency of asking the same questions is you get a comparison side by side. Where if you have, it's, it's kind of like the scoring process. You kind of have to ask the same questions specifically, because otherwise it's like, well, this person, this person really did create this interview. Well, then questions are a little easier than the first guy, you know? I, I think you have to ask the same questions. I get where you're coming from.
I got it.
I know, but I'll tell you one thing, if we're going to go into it thinking that everybody's going to be shady, we got a problem. I think we got to anticipate that everybody's going to be fair and reasonable and I think that's.
Because we didn't have to go through this process.
No, we didn't, and this person that's going through it's only got to go through it for a year. And after that, they're either going to win an election or they're not going to participate or they're losing an election, whatever it is. So I, I think in the meantime, I think this is a fair and open process. I haven't had a one complaint from anybody that was like, that's a dumb way to, everybody felt like it's wide open. I like that guys are doing, guys and gal, I say guys, but it's a general out. But people are going out, they're getting signatures, they're educating people. Why are you getting signatures? Well, this is what's going on. And I think everybody was like, hey, that's not a bad idea. So I think we're on the right track here and I, I think the candidates we're going to get are, I think if we just politely ask them, hey. Don't come in till your interview, if you want to stay after, that's fine, but don't come in before it. I don't think you're going to get anybody trying to kick the door in and say we're being discriminated. I, I think you're going to get everybody going, that's fair. Because they're not going to want, they don't know who's going first neither. Every one of them could be first and I wouldn't want to be the first one knowing I, all my competitors are behind me listening to these questions. So I don't see, I don't think you're going to have an issue with it, I really don't, so.
You guys have questions, email them to me by the 11th, I'll, you know, use yours and one Pam's.
Why don't you talk to Pam too if you want?
Yeah, she already did, she's got questions, so. Why don't you just email them questions out just so we know?
Okay, I haven't put them together yet, I've got like three separate emails, but.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Time you want them?
Well, I just, because the question, the idea that I had is if everybody got to input five questions, I felt like everybody, not that I'm or Gary. Somebody came up with old questions and then later on you're going, oh, that wasn't fair. I think if everybody put together five and you got 20, if some of them repeat, then you only have 17 questions or whatever, but.
So what do we decide on a date?
Uh, well, it's either the 15th or the 16th.
15th or 16th.
And I think, I'm just going to assume it's going to be at least the morning at minimum. So you might as well figure most of the day, so.
Nine o'clock?
I, you know, honestly, Wednesday's probably the easiest for me just because it's in the middle of the week. By then I've either sorted my schedule out or totally destroyed it. So I'd say the 16th, starting at nine?
Nine o'clock?
9:00 AM August 16th? God, I hope I don't have an appointment. My wife is going to be. I never remember that stuff, I'm terrible. Oh, yeah, no, Wednesdays are usually good. I can't remember anything I usually have on Wednesday, so let's do August 16th.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM.
Here at the courtroom.
Right here, it's going to be recorded on YouTube, it's going to be a special meeting.
And you pick the names I've had.
Marcy will come up with a.
I, I think that's.
I think that's fair and, um.
You can pick the names, Marcy.
I said I'm going to have a witness there.
Yeah.
When I pick them.
Yep.
And then I think, and then are, are you going to contact them? Is that the plan?
Yeah, I'll contact, I'll set the.
I think when you contact them, just tell them, show up at your appointed time. You're welcome to stay after your interview, but please do not show up before you have to. And let us know if you got issues because that person's going to get scored. So. I think that's fair.
So she's going to pick the names before we interview?
No. Well, I suppose it's going to have to.
Yeah, no, I have, so August 11th is going to come, she's going to get the petitions returned, whoever's in, three, four, five, 10, two people. She's going to put those names in a hat and have Jody or Gary, somebody's going to draw them out of the hat. First name is going to go at nine, the next one's going to go at.
Okay.
Okay, that's the other thing.
One, half hour?
Oh, no, it's got to.
No, hours, no, no, no.
Half hour?
Half hour, I'd say.
That's what I said, a half hour.
Oh, half hour, oh, I thought I said hour, I was going to say hours, way too long.
No, I said half hour.
I think a half hour, you're going to be stretching it. I think, because the other thing, the other, the, okay, well then here's another question.
Get your move on.
After those 20 questions, are we going to allow them to ask questions? Because that's where, when we've done interviews, that's where it always gets dicey. It's like you can cruise through questions in 10, 15 minutes. And then it's at the end, it's like, do you have any questions? And all of a sudden it's like one question leads to another, it's a conversation and it's educating them on the process, which I think is good.
That's good.
But next thing you know, you're going, next person's at 10:15, it's already 10:25, oh my God. Like I know that we ran into issues, I think with, with V and when you were with me on VA, right? We had like seven people and then we ended up running way behind because one or two people were just killing us with questions, which was great. But that's why I, I feel 45 minutes.
Yeah, because if you go an hour, then you got, you get done, if you have to get done with the first one in the half hour, then you sit here waiting.
Well, I think the other scenario is if, if they're, if they're here in the hallway and we got done early, if we want to take them early, I think we can. As long as they're, because it's going to be on TV, it's on the record. And if we get way ahead and we're like, oh my gosh, we're an hour and a half ahead, you know?
So you could.
We can take lunch break or something, or we can, we'll figure something out. I'd say like 45 minutes, I think you're going to have a lot of spare time. I don't think you will.
She could, she could tell them that too, they could come a half hour early if they wanted to, in case, or a little bit early.
And there's no preliminary about it?
No.
You know, if somebody's. At 10, well, if you come in, maybe you have nine thirty.
You don't want to sit in here.
Yeah, no, I, I think just tell them, if they argue a little early, we'll take them. Because we might have other issues like. And we might have new letter special attendants that can bring up and some of that or something. Because, I mean, you might also expect that there's going to be other people in this room.
Probably.
Right, I mean, I don't know if a lot of people are going to show up, but you're probably going to get a few other than the people being.
Hey, Eric, did that law change, you don't need the district judge anymore, right? Does it?
You, you what?
The district judge involved anymore? I don't know.
Did it, what did it?
You had to before, I don't know if that law changed. I mean, I called Joe in.
I don't think so, because Joe looked into that.
Don't we ask Joe?
Yeah, would you ask him?
Joe left him.
Because it used to be where you had to, but I don't know if that changed.
If there was no district judge, then I thought the auditor filled in.
Because I know when it happened before, where we had to do this, they had to have, they had district judges.
Well, I read something, the judge had to be present in part of this deal on an appointment or.
He was, he was.
On an interview. Am I right from, I read it somewhere?
No, because the auditor fills in if you don't make an appointment, I think.
Because when I came on here, there was no introduction or nothing, you just said it, you just, you had no chance to ask questions or?
It used to be, the law used to be where there's a vacancy, the commissioner, the rest of the commissioners and a district judge appoint somebody. But I, I wonder if that district judge was taken out.
I think you're right.
I think it was.
Well, I mean, like I said, I, I mean, I asked Joe to look into it, so I thought I'd handle it all clear. But well, we should just double check them and make sure.
I'll check.
Last thing I do is break long. But I know when Joe had looked into it, I thought that's where he came to the conclusion that we can appoint basically, like on the spot that day if we want.
You.
Right, so I don't, I think that part probably got amended out, I'm guessing, but we'll have to double check and make sure. Okay, so August sixteenth at nine AM, and forty-five minutes per.
Really?
Yeah. So now, the preliminary budget. So now, some of these things that you mentioned, like County Road and Bridge, you said it was two hundred and fourteen thousand over. That's over the maximum mills you can levy, right? So you would either have to appropriate them from some other fund, or cut it out, right, is that what you're saying?
Right.
We hate to cut it out.
Well, the only thing, I mean, the, the easiest thing when it comes to round, road district and county road and bridge is always the gravel, cause those are the two biggest numbers. And the reason you can generally cut gravel is, cause we do have some gravel in you, we in federal aid. There's also some gravel from that H, the Houseville fifteen oh five, Marcy already has a hundred and forty-four thousand in for gravel. So that's where, that's already part of the budget, and it's clear and good to go, so that's where like, that hundred and forty-four thousand could come out of. So the county, county road and bridge.
County road and bridge, do we have any gravel in there now?
County road and bridge right now, we sheet tiered on, and the folders where she's got a little ground better than that, but. So like, for county road and bridge for gravel, we have two hundred and twenty thousand. Right, so if you took all that out, you would be clear on that one, but necessarily, maybe you wanna take that all out.
Right.
And the same goes with gravel on the road district, was usually three hundred thousand, cause we generally budget about a half a million every year for gravel crushing, cause you just.
Right.
You never know, then all of a sudden, it's August, or October, and somebody comes in, and they want to crop it once, and it's like, you really wanna turn that down, so. Uh, but you don't have to go and cut all of it out, but it's, it's an easy way to, we usually cut maybe a hundred thousand out, because we do have permit fund, which we've usually gone into.
So where are you seeing the gravel at on County Road?
See, you're on the book though, you need to go in the sheet.
Go with the other.
Yep, that's about the line items for each budget, yep. So that's where, and that's where the only suggestion I'd have, if we were gonna cut for gravel, is cause that Houseville fifteen oh five already has a hundred and forty-four thousand in it for gravel. So if you wanna pull that from the gravel on one of the other, I mean, we're budgeting for not a lot of gravel at that point, so that's where. So.
I'm gonna be two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-one cents, shorten County Road and Bridge.
Right.
And then four hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixteen cents in the register.
So, so we have six hundred thousand there already, then?
Close to seven hundred thousand. But like I said, a half a million of that is gravel, we already have some gravel. In that Houseville fifteen oh five.
So when we pay gravel, like, like Mike Nolma, we pay him every year, right?
Yeah.
So does that come out of the gravel fund, or do you? Or where does that come out?
That out of County Road and Bridge, usually, yeah, gravel.
So that's twenty thousand a year there, right?
Yeah. So Joe.
Yes?
With the county commissioner, it used to be where you had a district judge, that law changed.
The county commissioner?
Okay, when, when they have to fire another county commissioner during the interview process, it used to be where a district judge had to be involved in that. That take law get changed?
It must have, cause that's not the law anymore.
It's not in there anymore, okay, that's what I was wondering.
No, I, I, I don't know, I thought I emailed that to you last week. Do you have to sit in on it? No, I don't have to be involved, I'll pull it up here, I didn't know that's what you're asking for.
So that summary page on the front of your book, when it talks about only the, the mill increase of negative point oh one, that doesn't account for this, these overages in the road districts in the county, cause these are only the max that you can levy for taxes.
Right.
So we have to cut that roughly seven hundred thousand out, or we have to find it somewhere else, which would be the permit fund, or.
Or, you know, another thing you could do is, you're, you're allowed to levy in the capital projects fund for road also.
And that, when you reduce that mill, right, because we had.
You can go up to ten mills in that.
And we're like.
You would want to put in there for gravel, do that for more taxes, I just want you to know that.
Right, and that's our, we're basically capped out on raising taxes to fund some of this, basically it's gravel.
But you, you can in the capital projects fund levy sure.
The capitals?
Capital projects at one point one one, and we can go up to ten, so.
That's, that's what we use for the jail fund, but you can also do it for capital projects, road projects, so. For those projects, anything.
So.
It's not even above the ten.
I guess my opinion for now is that, that seven hundred thousand dollar shortage ball, is, is mostly gravel. I mean, obviously, the increase in wages and stuff increased those departments, I think road district.
That's out of highway.
Right, but road district pays the curves and some of the other things that were related to the raising. So those budgets went up, because, I mean, BICA, all that increased when you do a base increase, so. Uh, the curves retirement, all those different numbers went up, you know. Well, I guess not much, she's budgeting the same month, so that really didn't go up, so.
But you know the health insurance premiums went up?
Today?
Fifteen percent.
How much?
Fifteen.
It went up fifteen percent again?
Fifteen.
Oh, small.
Yeah, but you're budgeting for twenty twenty-three, and your month requested for twenty twenty-four is only a thousand dollar difference.
What did, what did you think?
What we budgeted for in twenty twenty-three was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand for the first health benefit.
Right.
And twenty twenty-four, you're only budgeting for two hundred and eighty thousand, so there's really not an increase.
We over budgeted a lot.
Right.
Budgeting for some extra employees.
So you're anticipating that.
So what's the insurance bump last year?
Hardly anything.
Now this year went up fifteen percent?
It hasn't gone up for, it did go up last year, did go up the year before, and the year before, it went up just a little bit, like, less than one percent.
Now this year went up fifteen percent?
Yeah, the law just says, "When a vacancy occurs in the Board of County Commissioners, the remaining members of the Board shall immediately appoint someone suitable to fill the vacancy from the district in which the vacancy occurred." One sentence on how to do it. The rest of that section just states what happens if you can't agree.
Okay, then they took it out.
That might be, cause that's the part where I think the auditor sits in temporarily.
And the treasurer would have the appointment, unless the county doesn't have an elected treasurer, in that case, it would be any other additional member of the county.
Cause I remember when. That's why it was.
That changes.
Thanks, Joe.
Well, I'd say just looking at this now, the annual budget looks okay, I mean, as far as sending out notices and. And then this, the seven hundred thousand dollars that we'd have to cut out, we really don't have to cut it out right now, because we're not on foot for anything, and it's not even gonna reflect the.
Taxes.
It's not gonna reflect the tax like amount. So my point is, I think we should just leave it as it is for now, we got time, and, and we can go through, pick through these budgets, start asking some questions, and we're gonna have to find a way in those two budgets to at least get it down enough. You know, maybe we can't go down all the seven hundred, but if you get it down to a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand, then we can take that from the permits fund, and still do some of the gravel, and you're purchasing, or whatever, so.
So we really can't raise it anymore?
After we approve it today, you cannot raise it again.
So, so, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna raise it, we're gonna keep taxes staying?
Basically with the, yeah, so what happened?
We're gonna cut it, I mean, we gotta cut some places.
We, we increased spending, but we also got some funding for like, legislation also. Taxes aren't going to go up, even though we increased the spend, but like I said before.
Yeah.
That spending's gonna be the same next year now, we, we might not get the funding mechanism, so just go through it. There's some places where we can just try and get it, so that next year, we don't all of a sudden have this half million dollar increase, or whatever it is.
But what I'm saying is, we can't, we finalized this today, we can't like, go back to this capital projects, cause they, "Oh, we want ten mills rather than the two mills anyway." So we, we're gonna decide that today.
Right.
So either we're gonna, we're gonna either cut this next month, we're gonna cut what we can to make it work, right?
Well, after this, we can cut whenever we want, all the way up to, what is it, October is the, is the final.
Ten, it's finalized.
Yep, so you gotta tell on interest fund, you gotta tell October if you want.
But we're all in agreement not to raise anymore.
Right, I mean, the only question would be, do you wanna raise the capital budgets a little bit, which would increase taxes a little more, that is, which we hardly have any use at all right now, so.
So you increase two cabinets that were unorganized, roll.
Right.
Sixteen, nineteen, seventeen.
I guess I meant in comparison to what you already have. I guess the only question, or the only thing I'm wondering, just to help ourselves, do we put the capital projects up to like, three, do we raise it like, two mills?
And we can always cut it.
Exactly.
Right.
What I'm thinking is, if, if, let's just say we don't wanna sacrifice on this gravel, right, or we could just, a hundred thousand more would be nice. Why don't we raise that to, and just go to three even, that'd be two point eight nine mills. Just go to three even on capital projects, instead of one point one one?
Two or three?
That would be three even, just need around a hundred.
Then we can always cut it the next.
That would, that would put it up by another.
You want, you want, you want it total on three mills?
Total of three mills in capital projects.
And use for gravel?
Cause you're at one point eight.
Well, I'm just, yeah, I mean, the idea would be that we would wanna maybe use that for gravel. We could cut it out, but we can't raise it after today, so I would rather see what it looked like, and we can cut it, because if we do it, if we approve this now, and then later on, like, man, we really shorted ourselves on gravel, where's no chance to raise it, right? We'll have to either pull more from another fund, or, so, we could probably leave ourselves a little bit of headroom that'd gain us about another eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars, cause a mill's worth about forty-two and change, right?
Yep, yep.
So that gives us a little more option, if we decide we don't want it, or people don't wanna hear about it, they get your feedback, we can cut it out. I think that would be.
Yeah, another thing is like, you look, city styles, or it was inherent. If you guys are gonna do that, I highly recommend using emergency fund, if you're an emergency, it's mostly to be moved, not saved. Because we spent, I made it thirty thousand, I appropriated like, four hundred thousand and twenty-three, so we got another seventy thousand dollars.
So there's a little more emergency.
Yeah.
Which I don't disagree with you on either, it is an emergency.
And I did, I did seventy thousand more, cause we don't know if we're gonna get snow in November, simply, get last year. But what about the airport, though, if you don't put anything in for then now?
Oh, we should put something in, if we don't do it, we'll do it, but there's gotta, we gotta have something in there, if we wait.
And where would you wanna do that? You wanna establish a levy?
No, I don't establish a levy, I, I, here's my, to clarify my opinion from earlier, they're already going through the project, they're doing all the late work, and they need a little bit of help. I don't mind helping out with something like, improving the road going in there, because we're probably gonna be maintaining that road forever anyway. You just put gravel on, you bladed all that, you know, it might take twenty years to come up to seventy-five thousand, but if you pave it and everything, that's gonna be a good road for a long time for that airport. I, I do see the argument that it is almost like a county airport, I don't wanna create a permanent levy for it, cause I think that's something that the people in this county should decide.
I agree.
If that, if that airport is worth saving, and it's worth it like it should be, that should get voted on. But I don't have a problem with helping on a one-time project to keep things moving, they're, they're trying their best, they're trying to improve it, and, and really, we're almost not even helping with the airport, we're just improving a piece of road essentially, or, you know. And, and we don't have to give them, if we decide we wanna appropriate seventy-five thousand, and we don't like the way it's all of a sudden getting divvied up, and we feel like maybe it's not the way we agreed to it, we can shrink the money down, or we, we don't have to participate. But I think it's worth considering helping out on that request that they made, I don't really see a problem with that. It's really not any different than another city coming in and asks us to help tear their houses down, or there's, there's just certain times, it's no different than the state helping us with snow removal, or with the roads, no different federal aid stuff. There comes times when there's a project worth investing in, and you just need a little bit more. I don't have a problem with helping out with like, the road going.
So why don't you increase the capital project, if that's a role thing, you can use capital projects for that too?
Well, and that would be one thing, cause at least it's not a levy that's like, being created specifically for them. I mean, where, you could, you could argue that you're just increasing that levy for this specific project, and earmarking that money, and then next year, cutting it down if you want, or something. You know, which essentially, you're gonna have to do anyway, because there's really no more room in the budget to, unless you're gonna pull it out of something else here, you're gonna pull out gravel, or, or something else to earmark it for that.
And you know, Skylar was gonna check into the grid with those grants to see if maybe.
Right.
Right, and there's all kinds of opportunities, that's where I don't, I don't think it's a problem with setting some money aside for the opportunity to help, if it makes sense, versus creating a levy, I don't think we can.
I just think that's a, you know, private business, I don't think we should really, that's my opinion, I guess, I just don't think so. I mean, it's like.
Why do you think it's private?
Because it's privately owned, it's not owned by the county.
Well, it's owned by the city, I think, is how that.
It's city, I think, but they consider renaming it, that county has a portion of it.
Well, I mean, that, that never came, that never came about, you know, and then, who's on the board, do we have any kind of say, or anything, you know, none of that stuff.
Right, I still have a lot of questions about it, that's where I, I think this path of, of, of setting some money aside, if you get the questions answered, you get a better detailed plan come out, it's March, April, and it's like, wow, this is a thought out plan, this is our contribution. You know, it gives you the opportunity, but it still doesn't, you don't have to, I mean, you don't have to do it right now, I mean.
Yeah.
I just wanna, I just wanna have the money in there if we do it, that's what I'm.
Well, cause I don't, I don't disagree with helping out, I don't, I, I share Don's concerns with a lot of things, there's a lot of information that's still, like you said, I don't even know the board members, I don't know how they come to be appointed, I'm assuming it's through the city, like. You know, they're, they're asking for funding, and there's a lot of information that, I don't think that they're trying to hide anything, it's just that, I don't think sometimes they presented it perfectly well, but.
I guess I'd like to fund it.
Well, the, the, the airport has its own board, you know, but like I said, that's where I feel like sometimes the city's coming in, it's like, where's the board members, who are they, who's the, who's the president of the board, who's the, you know.
I just, I just feel.
Those are the questions I do have, we're responsible for the taxpayers' money, right, I mean, this is not our money, this is taxpayers' money, and if it's a private thing, if it's something that's not even, the county doesn't own it, why should, why should we be spending the taxpayers' money on that?
I mean, that'd be like the restaurant downtown, well, farmers, people in town use that, that's the essential thing for the people too, right? So if we say, well, they come and say, "We can't make it, we need help," well, then we should help them too, right? I mean, that's kinda how I look at it, I don't know.
I mean, the only, the only argument I'll make with it is the fact that the Litton Airport is one of the few airports that's really, I mean, you take like, the airport in Hazleton, or some of these other grass runway airports, they're, they're for spraining only, I mean, maybe a few hobby type guys, but. That Litton Airport has an actual asphalt runway, and then taxways and things like that, that's where.
I'm not saying that, but, and, and if, if, if that's the way it wants to be, if they got a good airport, then they should let the people decide if, if they wanna, if we should give money to that, you know, or.
Right, well, I don't, I don't think anybody's in disagreement with that long term, I think the main thing is, they're coming to us with some funding for a, a project right now, that, you know, and I, I don't really see a prob, I, I like the idea of depreciating out part of the project, like, I don't wanna just go and give money to it and let them decide, like. If they decide that widening that road and asphalt, and I mean, if that's a road we're blading and gravelling anyway, if you can take that kind of off maintenance rolls for us anyway, it's kind of a win-win in that, plus it stays nicer for the road going into the airport. Uh, that's where I, my opinion has changed a little bit on helping out with the airport, I don't wanna, I don't think creating a long-term levy is the proper role of this board, I think that needs to get voted on, but I don't see any problem, especially, I mean, it depends how we're utilizing it too. Like I said, we had Prairie Dog funding, ARPA funding, it's probably a little messy using those fundings for the airport, I mean, you probably can't, or, or it's gonna take too long. But if you're utilizing that funding in other places, and you can take some funding we have, and help out, make that airport project happen, I don't know.
I guess, I just feel, I, I guess I feel differently. I mean, if the store were coming and say, "Well, we need, we need a little money," are, are they gonna come next, who's gonna come next? Who are we gonna help, and who are we not?
Well, I think the main question is here, is whether or not we're even gonna just have some money available for it, and, and since we are in the preliminary mode, this really isn't a final decision anyway, so.
It's just appropriate some money into the.
Well, I think, and I think in the meantime, there's a lot of questions that can be asked and answered until then, and then, then funds don't have to be, you don't have to do a project with them, maybe they won't even do a project, maybe their bids will be out of line. Maybe they'll find funding, look at the Strasburg Lagoon, we were talking about doing some funding for that, and they ended up finding all the funding, and they made it happen on their own, so. I think the decision we're making now is just whether or not we even wanna entertain participating, and I, I, I don't really see a problem with at least preparing for the idea that something would work out, and we could always change our minds later if we don't want to, so. I think in that respect, especially for the preliminary budget reasons, I think if we went up to three on the capital projects, that would probably give us.
No, you go up to three, you're gonna use it for gravel, you said, you're meaning, so you should up to five, and use the two mills for the airport. Which would be eight, four thousand now.
Well, you know what, one thing good about that is if we go up to five, and people are watching these meetings, and they hear what we're talking about, we'll find out how they feel.
We'll find out.
We can start asking, but I, I don't have a problem here, you know, I understand there's certain people that wants to support the airport, there's certain people that don't, I'm offensive about it, it's tough, I.
I, I, I have no problem with the airport, I like.
Exactly, and that's the hard part, is I, I think it's, I think it's a great resource, and it, it needs to be maintained, but the proper role is who's supposed to maintain it, and that's.
That's exactly right.
So I think it's a good thing to start going around and asking the people we talked to about, what do you think? Do you think a one-time project's a big deal, do you want us to fund it long term, do you want us to never fund any of it? And honestly, I, I think I'd be happy with just about any idea, really, because it's, it's a tough decision, so. Why don't you go up to five for the capital, and let's see what the preliminary stuff looks like? We can always cut it, we can't raise it, I would suggest looking at some good places to cut, because I'm going to do that, and, and we'll hammer out a budget by October. So I don't think there's really, I don't think there's really any changes, other than running the capital projects mills to five mills.
To five mil?
Yep, it was at one point one, we'll do it to five even, which would be an increase of, okay, my math is now at three point eight nine mills, would be the increase from what Marcy put in, that would be the increase. And that, we would need in the form of a motion, and once that approved, that would solidify the preliminary budget, and estimates will go out, and people will see how it looks, and then.
And they will respond?
Absolutely, they should, and I hope they do, I'm not, I mean, hopefully courteously, but, right, I mean, these are decisions that, that need to get made, and, and I don't disagree with either side, it's tough. Cause no matter what you do, you're probably doing too much or not enough, that's just how it is, so. Anybody else got anything to add to that, or?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the primary budget for now.
Okay, so Commissioner Hall will make the motion to approve the preliminary budget with the capital projects going to five mills, otherwise, everything else is unchanged. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll check it.
Second by Commissioner Mitya, is there any discussion on preliminary? Not hearing any, all of them favor say aye, uh, votes? Preliminary budget is approved. Preliminary budget is approved. A red pen works really good when you go on through.
You see a lot easier.
There is a lot easier. Okay, so, um, hey, that's fine, no, I'm no budgeting expert either, but I know one thing about the preliminary budget, just for everybody locked at home too, is far from over. So when you see that deal in the, in your mail, that's supposed to get you to go, hey, I don't like that or I don't find with that and let your commissioners know. And that's the same thing and I, I can guarantee we're gonna be cutting something out of there and it just makes sense.
Never done this on a budget.
Yeah, well, like I said, right now.
We can choose.
Right now, we are locked in, we can't go any higher, we can go lower and it just, it's.
One for each, I guess.
It's gotta be done, so. Um, so the other thing is the bills and then, I don't know, these other two liquor licenses, Gary never responded to my text. So I don't know if he took off for lunch or whatever.
Well, we could, we could approve them and then he could still, um, just let him know what the dates are.
Tell you what, we can.
He can watch it. I'll make a motion to approve both of those.
Okay, so one is for Mike, Mike Tausch at Cattle Bay, two-day event, September 2nd, 3rd, which I'm guessing is some kind of Labor Day party. And, um.
The other one's Quencher.
The other one is the Quencher for the rodeo grounds at Hague on, uh, it's a one day for August 13th, so make a motion for.
I make a motion to approve both of them.
I'll check it.
So motion was made by Commissioner Everly to approve both liquor licenses, seconded by Commissioner Mitya.
And then a guy can just let Gary know what.
Right, um, yeah, well, like I said, they're both in businesses in the county, it's probably not an issue. Any more discussion on the liquor licenses for Cattle Bay? For Mike Tausch, the Cattle Bar or Todd Nuson, the Country Bar or the Rodeo Ground? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Liquor license approved. Your glasses were in the auditorium.
I'm done. I was gonna clean them for you this morning, but I forgot.
Oh. You, you need to sign things?
Yep.
And then Joe has that district court or the municipal judge agreeing with them.
Can you give that to your son?
Yep. Another little nugget of information off topic, they are working on the culvert on ATO 4. So I seen some pictures.
They started digging an old.
Yeah. They got two excavators, a dozer, a payloader, they got quite a bit of equipment on. U.S. dirtworks?
Uh, where?
Couldn't tell you.
They said they couldn't get it.
I think the DOT was pretty much ready, you can take anybody that qualified. Let's see, because I, I got some pictures this morning, yeah, so it's U.S. site works. They're not from North Dakota according to their phone number because it's a 763 is the first, is the area.
It's the labels.
U.S. site worker. Got quite a bit of iron there, looks like skin loader, payloader, uh, dozer, two excavators.
You bet it was straight one of them.
Yeah, they got it, looks like in this picture I got here, they got it pretty much down to the culvert already, so they're.
Did you walk your own?
I haven't, I, I, I was 20 some feet of bill or something at the top of that culvert. That's why it was, that's why it was so hard, they couldn't get anybody that.
That is gonna deal with strings on there.
Big project.
Big time.
So I guess hopefully that's, they were hoping to have it open in September sometime, well, it looks like they're on target. I mean, if they're that far ahead already August 1st, hopefully they're gonna done.
You know, I haven't gotten any petitions, it maybe I won't get any.
Oh, well, then I guess you're the next county commissioner until otherwise. Says the treasurer fills the spot.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah. Somebody's gotta fill the spot. Well, I'm sure you'll get petitions. That's 10 days away from the deadline now.
Fennig Brother. Separate, you should. Best to wait until the. 2078, this one.
For Fennig though, and another. What's it for? What's it say?
Gravel classified rule. What's that about Fennig Brothers Gravel?
That's for the Beaver Bay Road.
Well, that's for the.
Oh, that's their deal, yeah, we're just.
We're just grabbing the dollar.
Okay, okay, that's got, yeah, so that's, uh, that's their deal, okay. Must be.
It's done, I think.
Is it?
It's.
Private company. And wait.
I think it's.
Oh yeah, it says Project Beaver Bay right here on top down. It says Project Beaver Bay, so. Beaver Bay.
Just say on the, I didn't care.
It says Amens County Beaver Bay Assessment, so, so that's that, that fund that Marcy started and all the landowners pitched in.
We can roll, what's that?
That's the odd, it's the new auditors.
What does it drop to your decision to check out GPS?
Yeah. GPS, uh, any kind of, yeah, laser grade.
Coin grading, yeah.
Do you expect all these bills, before you, Fisher, did you, did you know all these bills were happening before you?
Yeah. I mean, this is all.
It's not overwhelming, right?
Brock Mopperm, that's the ones that we agreed to, to focus with Summit.
See it too.
Yeah, someone there.
So what we dream?
More certainly with, uh, well, there's different raids depending on if their senior lawyer works on it or somebody.
Just retake it if they're here.
Right. They filed some of the paperwork, so when Summit filed the paperwork to disregard our variances and everything, then they, they filed the response.
Cause Summit's all in favor of that. I'll get, I'll get, I'll get two weeks really when I call you.
And I talked to, I talked.
That's such a hidden area.
I talked to, I talked to Commissioner Bender about it and he didn't know about it either, so that was no.
Right out of town.
Everybody I talked to up in that area about it knew nothing about it, so it wasn't like, oh no, we all knew that was coming. They were just, they were just, yeah, you, yeah.
I drove up and talked to one of the front drivers, a little bit reluctant to do it, not knowing who's behind the wheel.
Yeah, but yeah, they, I mean, nobody, like even their zoning book, nobody knew they were gonna start.
Last time they were cleaning that site and leveling it. I asked somebody except they knew you should, Summit's come up to it.
It's amazing that they're trying to do any kind of, I mean, I would think you'd at least need some kind of building permit, hall permit, so, I mean, pretty bold just all stumbled in there.
Just thinking that if they do get a green line, it's fair. Well, that's it, thank you. Barry, can you do it? I should hold the red lights up if you see a car.
You hold what?
I should hold, put a red flag on the supplemental question of Summit always here to go through us.
Gary, have you asked anybody about the county committee yet?
County committee?
What about Linda? Linda Ball? And Gayle?
Request over.
For county committee?
A big advantage for assets, for that, that don't issue.
Annexation dissolution.
And you know what time they get paid is they will be. You would have to know where they're at.
I know. Okay, each member is entitled to compensation at the rate of $62.50 per day and to reimburse for expenses, uh, for any violation or misconduct.
Fifty-two?
Sixty-two dollars, sixty-two fifty per day.
Any questions? Why, where the meetings have the timeout?
I think at Barker, they're gonna meet in Barker. Down in Barker School.
That's where they meet?
I think so, I'm sure, they had a meeting down there once, I think that's where they're gonna meet. You know, like this last time we had annexation with, uh, the property, the annexation, they met at Bismarck. But down here, I think they're gonna meet down Barker School.
They're gonna meet down there?
Where else?
What's the shame is what's gonna happen to that building now that there's no school there? I mean, it's still a good building.
Well, that's the last year there's no more school.
But there was only two kids down there last time I was there. They had me do, they had me do a little plumbing work down there, there was only two kids. And they were both the same age, they were, must have been their last years, so.
Well, it's why it was a teacher.
If the ceilings were a little higher, you'd have a county shop in Westfield then too.
What's that?
So if the ceilings were a little higher, you could have a county shop in Westfield. I mean, it's like, what are you gonna do with that building now, you know, it's a brick, it's within a schoolhouse. Brick building, concrete floor, that.
Nice little building.
Yeah, it is, it's a nice, it's got, shoot, big bathrooms, you know, I mean, it's like, can be used for some kind of like a community hall.
It'd be a community hall.
You could, a little church or something, somebody could use it for something. They've been maintaining it, I mean, they kept it in good shape.
Yeah, the roof got peeled off and they put a little.
It's got a newer sewer in it, that was updated like 10 years ago, so.
You know, like these guys that bring in, where did they came for a hour?
You mean like the temporary guys? I think they kind of established that temporary.
Oh, that's what I was saying. No, that's the hour.
I don't know, I suppose it depends because like Terry's got a CDL and, and GT and so if they're like temporary. I think what we kind of approved there, I'm thinking is what he went by for.
It didn't say, uh.
Hey, Ref, this is Mark. So the county commissioners are meeting today, they're wondering where are the meetings gonna be held in the bathroom? I didn't know if you were gonna have it down in school. Yeah, just let me know, you can, you can, the commissioners are downstairs whenever, just keep in touch. Okay, I'll let him know, thanks. Okay, goodbye. Okay, I just talked to Brad Dick and he said because Linton is centralized, he's gonna see if he can't use a half court. Because there's, you know, um, I think it's one of those hazel tins, some of the linton, some, couple of these guys. So he said he's gonna have the meetings there.
Oh, like the board.
Can I wait to combine soon?
No.
This, um, Beaver Bay, Meyer porch is that for, that road duty. So you're gonna be having a wait for this. I suppose flowers probably won't be, that'll probably be the first thing, huh? And the beans, I mean, things going on. So no special movements in October, no hunting. You're gonna be pretty busy here, I thought. If you make it back from Sturgis in one piece. Hopefully I'll make it there.
You want a Sturgis?
What is Sturgis? Sweet counselor down there?
Huh?
Counselor?
No, Sturgis. More like Royal.
Oh, more, okay, I was thinking. When does that start?
Uh.
When does that start?
August. This weekend, probably, right? Yeah.
August.
It's usually like the first weekend.
Yeah. We're going next.
Wait, if you guys are done looking at bills, I'll let them make a motion to adjourn. Get it out of here.
I'm making a motion right there. Sorry.
On the paper? All right, meeting adjourned.